Yes.
Okay.
How are you doing, Paul? Good.
I'm ready when you are, I'm sorry. Hey Linda. The supervisor is more polite than I am. Okay. 7:00 PM on the dot, so we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call to order the town board agenda meeting for October 20th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarada.
Present.
Councilwoman Jakewood. Absent. Councilwoman McGraw.
Here.
Councilman McPartland.
Here.
Supervisor Syad.
Here. And I may have called that an agenda meeting at the beginning, it is a regular town board meeting.
Just making sure we're paying attention, thank you.
Yep, yep, we're seeing if anyone, everyone knows. Okay, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, and every liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. So first up, we have the approval of the minutes. First, we have the minutes of the September 22nd, 2020, regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or subtractions to those minutes? Okay, with no changes, additions, or subtractions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the September 24th, 2020, special meeting, I will move those forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or subtractions? Okay, with none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the September 29th, 2020, special meeting. I will move those forward, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, additions, or subtractions? Okay, with none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the October 2020 special, special meeting, I will move those forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or subtractions? Okay, with none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the October 15th, 2020, special town board meeting, I will move those forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or subtractions? With none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Okay, instead of going straight to privilege of the floor, because I believe there's still some people registering and signing in, I'm gonna move to our first three ceremonial resolutions. So first, we have Resolution 2020-254, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood, Councilman McPartland, and Councilwoman McGraw, will the clerk please read?
A ceremonial resolution recognizing and thanking NCAP for their dedication of 25 anti-substance abuse signs for installation at town parks and for helping to make our town safe, healthy, and a drug-free community.
Thank you, I will second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank NCAP for donating and working on this project with us here at the town. I also want to thank my fellow council members for their work and their committees on getting the signs for the town, which again will help keep our town safer and make our residents and visitors aware that our towns are smoke-free, vape-free, drug-free places, and to keep them places for families and children. So, again, I want to thank NCAP.
Are the microphones on?
They are on, Lorraine.
Oh, with the masks.
With the masks, yep. I'll try to speak louder.
I'd like to add to that. So NCAP has been a longtime partner of... Oh, sorry. Are you all set, Bill?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. NCAP has been a longtime partner of the town, of the district. We very much value that partnership. NCAP was a big partner in the success of the farmers market that we held over the course of this last several months. And we appreciate and value that partnership moving forward. So again, thank you, thank you for being here, Caroline. Caroline's a good friend as well, so it's very special to be able to recognize the organization in this way. Normally, we would have you come up, there'd be pictures, shaking hands. We're still gonna do that, Caroline, because it's, you know. Okay. You're the activity tonight, so why don't you join? Anyway, I guess go ahead and join us then, Caroline, thanks. We're thrilled to have you here, Caroline Thompson, it is nice to see you. Bill couldn't see you in the corner of the room, so that's what happened, so I could see you.
Whereas the president of NCAP approached the town early 2020 and relayed NCAP property design and donate signs with anti-substance message that could be placed in town parks and white flag locations to encourage youth and drug use. Encourage, discourage, I'm sorry, youth and alcohol and drug use. The president of NCAP, who attended after the term of town, worked closely with the county's government and holds a sign, worked closely with the office of the town attorney, police and public safety committee, proposed anti-substance message for inclusion on the signs.
Whereas NCAP advocated for the inclusion of anti-vaping message on the sign, which promoted the town board to amend Section 1475 of the Code of the Town and Niskiuna prohibiting smoking within the confines of town parks on July 28th, 2020, to also expressly prohibit vaping or the use of e-cigarettes within the confines of any Niskiuna town park. And whereas a result of the amended code of the Town and Niskiuna, the anti-substance message included on the signs, alcohol, smoking, e-cigarettes, vaping, and drug use are prohibited in Niskiuna parks and recreation areas, Niskiuna Town Ordinance 145-5. NCAP has donated 25 custom signs at its Town and Niskiuna for installation at various parks and outdoor areas valued over $1,000. In addition to promoting discussion about vaping and the use of e-cigarettes within our community, NCAP has also inspired the town to collect and solicit input from members of the community for the purpose of identifying outdoor spots where youth meet to engage in underage drinking or illegal drug use. NCAP volunteers have shown time and time again through their actions and through their recent donations of signs that NCAP truly cares about our community and are committed to improving the quality of life for all those living in our community. Therefore, resolved on this 20th day of October 2020, and the Town and Niskiuna Town Board hereby recognizes and honors NCAP for their generous donations of signs to be installed at town parks and outdoor facilities, and for volunteering time and resources to develop strategies that will aid youth in our community to make healthy life decisions regarding the use of alcohol and drugs, thereby improving the quality of life for all those living, working, or learning in the town or school district of Niskiuna.
Thank you for coming, Caroline. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, we had the presentation of the ceremonial, and now I will have the clerk please call the roll.
Councilman Delarada.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syad.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes, congratulations. Next, we have our next ceremonial resolution, 2020-255, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A ceremonial resolution honoring Ann Tracy for her years of dedication, dedicated and compassionate service to the Town and Niskiuna.
Thank you, I will second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to read some statement from the workers at the senior center, so let me read this. The entire staff of the Niskiuna Senior Center would like to congratulate both Ken Brown and Ann Tracy, there's two ceremonial resolutions, on the ceremonial resolutions presented to them tonight. Both are well-deserving of this honor. We are very grateful for the privilege of working with such caring and dedicated coworkers. While working towards a common goal of providing a cheerful home away from home for our seniors, we have also enjoyed the kindness and generosity both Ann and Ken have brought to the center on a daily basis. We will miss Ann, who always made sure everyone's plate was full and always brought extra joy to every holiday celebration, and we will miss Ken, whose positivity and can-do attitude is an inspiration to us all. Our little senior center family isn't the same without you, and we hope you will come back often and enjoy being a guest of the senior center, and let us take care of you. Best from all of us, Edie Canizzo, Vito Caruso, Bob Capen, Robin McPartland, Linda O'Brien, and Lisa Stevens. And I too would like to add my thanks to both Ken and Ann and wish them well, and we really appreciate your service. You will be missed and always thought of warmly, thank you.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarada.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syad.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes, congratulations, Ann Tracy. We will now present the ceremonial resolution for Ken Brown. This is Resolution 2020-256, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood, will the clerk please read?
A resolution, a ceremonial resolution honoring Ken Brown for his commitment and dedication to the Town and Niskiuna, and congratulating him on his retirement.
Thank you, I will second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarada.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syad.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes, so thank you again, Ann and Ken, you will be missed. Okay, and we will go back to our regularly scheduled program here, we're gonna move back to privilege of the floor. So I'm now gonna open privilege of the floor. Many of you registered, you pre-registered online to speak, so I do have a list. I'm going to call out the names of these individuals. Please keep your masks on when you are speaking. We do have hand sanitizer at the ready, if you would like to use it before or after you speak. And I did have two individuals who registered after 5:00 PM, so normally we do 5:00 PM cutoff, but for the first meeting, I do have two other names, I will call them out after I read the first four. So first on the list, Ms. Lorraine Zabin.
Burst into our hearts.
Yes.
Excuse me, I have a question about this privilege of the floor. I signed up to come to the meeting, but no one told me I had to register to speak.
It's all, it's one in the same. So I have, yeah, I have your registration, so I'll call you next. Sure.
Good evening, long time. Lorraine Zabin, 2455 Brookshire Drive. Now, there's something that I want to bring up, because I know I'm getting a little hard of hearing, but a long time ago, when this building was first designed, we needed to do something about the audio. We had a gentleman from GE, unfortunately, I should remember his name, but I can't, you might remember him. Very nice guy, long gone. And he insisted, because he was having a hard time hearing, and of course, now with our masks, it's even more difficult. We are not always as articulate, and I do strain, so I know a lot of it could be my problem. But I do wonder if in fact, that the room, you know, does not have some deficiencies in the audio. But of course, we are a reduced audience. Anyway, I would, I don't know who you would call, but there may be someone who could give you an evaluation. I went over the agenda, and there were, first of all, I want to thank you, I know it's been a difficult time. It seems that you've got your protection, I hope we've been safe, haven't heard of anyone in Niskiuna. There may have been some people that are not as active as, and maybe that's a good thing. I do want to share one little personal thought. The pandemic and I both celebrated a, same time of the year. I entered my ninth decade, and of course, the COVID-19 came in at the same time, so I've been kind of watching it very carefully. And according to all problems, the seniors seem to have behaved very well. We stay home, we wear our masks, we distance, and even though I may be annoying on the phone, I do try to stay as active as I can, even though personally, it has been very difficult. I know the seniors have been very informative, I do read their emails, I do call the gals, they're, they're wonderful. I do take a little bit of notice from the fact that our supervisor's office has been very incommunicado with the residents. I've called, I've asked about the meetings, who knows this, who knows that? There had, I've talked to Brian Bacchus, he's, he's been there. I have never gotten your deputy on the phone. You know, leaving messages is a little bit difficult. When you call every office and they tell you to leave a message, when you know that there should be someone answering their phones. I, I can't believe that a small town of 22,000 has been practically off the map for six months. I do know that other towns in Schenectady County have had some kinds of communications, and I, and they're bigger than we are. And I do chide the fact that we've never gotten a, a letter. I mean, I'm, I'm not proficient on the computer age, but I do have an email, I do get email. I do have a phone, I do have, luckily, I did have the chairman of the planning board wanting to know if I was alive or dead. I said, no, I'm still here. But my point is that this has been six months of a lot of misinformation, not only with the department heads, but trying to speak to anyone. And they say, well, it's the governor. Well, the governor didn't tell us to wait until, no, October. They've had meetings, people have had meetings, I was just telling Ms. McGraw, coming by the fire station, they're, they're having a meeting tonight, what are they doing? Are they wearing masks, are they subject to the same kinds of restrictions that we all are? And, and I'm kind of wondering what has taken priority? You haven't been able to come to the office, if you have, I don't know why you, what you're doing, because you're certainly not answering the phones. I want to know if committee meetings are scheduled, if people can come to them. A lot has been going on, there's been a lot going on in the town. A lot of things that I would like to have participated in, because I think the town board, and you're all in it, you've, you've not followed the comprehensive plan, you've allowed variances, you've allowed things to go through. That's really, to me, when I think of a hardware store, and I think of the traffic that's on Balltown Road now, I, I find that our town is losing its identity. All we seem to have are problems. And one of the biggest problems, I think, was the handling of some very personal problems that existed. And I am not happy to think that it was one of our elected officials who called, who called the editor of the Times Union to give him the news about our former comptroller. Whatever happened to our dignity, our ethics? This is, these are people, not only the comptroller, but the chief of police. You handled him with a lot more dignity than you handled the comptroller. And I resent people that call and inform you of things, and then it, it was like a balloon, it just went all over. I mean, I've known people ever since the comptroller was hired in the old town hall. I was shocked. I mean, how could you work with a person, how could you know and then treat him the way he did? And I blame the new councilperson for listening to someone. I don't know what Schenectady Progressive is, I don't know what hold they had on to tell us about one of our, I thought, trusted employees, and now we've hired, or will be as of tonight's resolution, an extremely expensive lawyer to do whatever you're doing to promote this. I want to thank Councilman Delarada. I think with his background, education, and sense, I think he was the only one that served. Denise had a few nice things to say also, but I think it was handled very poorly. And we jump on things, and you've not only hurt the reputation of the town, but you hurt your own reputation. You are adult, educated, elected. I, I can't believe that you were just so frustrated over this photograph or film that, that you completely lost your senses. I think you should have behaved a lot more grown up than you did. And I fear for any employee who really doesn't watch his Ps and Qs, because we have a board that is really gonna strip you naked, so be careful out there. And I, I'm kind of disappointed, you know. I never elect people because of a political identification. I elect people because they're residents, and they live here, and they care about things. And this is one time that I have really been very disappointed. And, and as I say, other than Councilman Delarada, who was brave and conscious and knowledgeable, and I think, I think we rush to judgment on this gang, and I hope that we don't have any episode like that again. It, it was so disturbing. Well, anyway, I had to get that off my chest. Now, I looked at the budget, and I don't know whether you're going to have any more budget hearings. There probably should be a budget hearing between now and November. I don't know whether dates have been set for that, but I will check that out, there are some things on the budget. I noticed that you've got $1,000 set aside for the farmer's market, why? We don't have one person from Niskiuna who has a booth at the farmer's market, unless something's changed. The farm, because the gentleman who owns the farm lives in town, but the produce is in South Colony. I have not been able to get to the farmer's market. But, you know, you're using our grounds, you have $1,000 for what? For expenses, for giving them money? I should think they would be giving the town money for using our, our property. But I don't know what your contract is with them. And I don't know whether you're going to proceed with it. I do know that you do have signs all over for the farmer's market to identify them, to promote them. And, and I'm not sure that fits within our sign ordinance. But I do have problems with that, I see signs all over that don't belong in town. But anyway, that's because for my pleasure and sanity, I drive around the town. You know, I went over to Windsor Drive, and, and I thought, why did we give those people extra front yards when we knew that that road was supposed to go through so their houses were set back? And they, you know, so now they've gained a little bit more frontage than we would normally have had. And there were some other things that unfortunately, the, the apartments that are just down the street, that was a treed lot. It was denuded. Didn't anybody notice that all the trees came down? Where was the inspection on that? I sound like your old mother or grandmother yelling at you, but I, I'm just saying I'm disappointed. The town, to me, has been wonderful. And when I see things that even though we had problems, we couldn't come to work, blah, 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 certain things had to continue. So that's a problem, and now I find out that the gentleman who has known, been known to have problems in the planning board with many of his other applications, now we're not going to have anything, he's run out of money. What happens? We're stuck. Okay, Ann Tracy, 20 years. Why, Ann, you're just a baby, you should still be out there cooking those meals. She's, she's been very good. And I will bring it up to the new chairman of the senior citizens. We still have two days a week. That has been two days since we ever started a senior citizen program. I don't, you spend money on god knows what, but for some reason or other, we can't even use the upstairs anymore. We're all down in that little room. Plumbing is terrible. You spend money like water on the swimming pool, and the senior citizens place is, is awful. And I don't know, maybe, maybe we are dying off. Well, anyway, time flies. And when I see things that we've been used to and had, and changes are made, I find it very discouraging. I think we lose focus. I think it's time we got back to the town. I think we got back to the people that live on Whitmire Drive. There's nothing in the budget about those people that have to suffer. I don't know what's happened to the trucks, I guess there's a contract, something that had, that has... But how are we going to allow those trucks to continue to go down an inefficient road with the size of the trucks? And it's a little bitty area, and it's just disgusting what we've done. So, we all make mistakes, sometimes they can be resolved. I hope to come to more meetings, but it's gonna be difficult. Tonight was not a particularly good night to celebrate the grand opening. But on the other hand, I did want to come, wish you well. Wish you well, especially our bride of six months. But that doesn't mean personals. As someone said, as if it was a quote in the paper today. I liked it in The Godfather. It's just, it's just business. It's not personal. It's business. So please get to business and thank you very much. I'm sorry to take up so much time.
Thank you, Lorraine. Okay. Next, we have Linda Rizzo.
I have to give my address, I presume. Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway, Niskiuna. I want to talk briefly about two issues. One is the budget. You know, I'm frustrated tonight because I have another commitment. And I thought, hmm, should I really go? Because really, it's like blowing in the wind when you come to address issues here. But I'm going to do it. Again, this year, we are using the fund balance. Because if we didn't use the fund balance, we'd have a 5% increase, which means we have a deficit. Putting it mildly, okay? We used the fund balance last year, and I spoke about it. When you use a fund balance, I said last year, your budget is structurally unsound. Now we're using it again. I hear a comment, well, it's the supervisor's budget. No, you all have a fiduciary role here. It's not just her budget. Yeah, it is. But you have to speak up as board members. Because if this keeps going, you are on a financial Titanic and you're going to hit a fiscal iceberg and sink. You cannot use the fund balance to balance the budget. And I'm going to use a word that people shriek, you know, they, they, oh, I don't use that word, layoffs. I am sorry. But you cannot use the fund balance to resolve your problems because you're not resolving them. You've got to make cuts in the budget without the fund balance. You have to take X amount of departments that are not considered essential. You have to look at them. And if there are people in those departments that must get laid off, you can use the fund balance. If you take them out of the budget and pay for their salary for one year. And if things get better the following year, you can reassume them. You could put them back in the regular budget. But to use the fund balance to balance a budget is inherently wrong. And I'm going to put this bluntly. Before the supervisor took over, she was given a sound budget. They never used the fund balance. Joe Landry never used the fund balance, ever. The budget was always balanced. All of a sudden, almost three years later, this is the second time we're using a fund balance because of a 5%, we'd have to raise taxes 5%. That's a deficit. This is not due to standard of living increases. We haven't had any. So my word of advice is this. You cannot use the fund balance. Because if you get a new supervisor, they're going to come out and say we have a 12% deficit. We've got to raise taxes 12 or 14%. And of all you wonderful people up here, don't realize it. And you're afraid to talk about layoffs because of, quote, your political career. Your career is going to be over if that happens. Because this hall will be jammed with people, COVID or no COVID. God forbid, we still are doing this next year. It's going to be a bad scene. So that has to end. I said it last year. You keep using the fund balance and pointing to the supervisor. Yes, it is her budget. But you all have a mouth. You have to speak up. And you have to say you have a structurally unsound budget. And anyone watching this tonight in Niskiuna better be concerned. And they better ask themselves, look at your tax bill. Can you afford a 12% to 15% increase? Because they just allowed this to ride the board using fund balances? They need to wake up and ask themselves this question because this is not good. All right. Enough said on that. My next thing is to piggyback a little bit on what Mrs. Abin said. Paul Sebastian. I have been very bothered by this from the very beginning. And I'm sorry, I don't know who these Schenectady progressive people are, but they damn well would not hold me hostage and leave me in terror of calling me a racist. Because I would hold my social justice record up against anybody. I mean, I have been in areas in New York City, all the ways through some of our major towns and cities and coming up from Buffalo, Syracuse and all, that you wouldn't even go into and homes I have been in. I mean, I worked with the CSJs for eight years and didn't receive one bit of salary, helping the underprivileged. I've seen Mother Teresa's sisters, what they did in New York City. They rolled their sleeves up. They didn't go point fingers at people, calling them racist for political gain. Now, what irks me is, I watched the virtual meeting once and I had to turn it off. Letters were read. Insinuating, not calling Mr. Delarada and Mrs. McGraw racist, but insinuating, God, they're racist. These two people are not racist because they demanded someone be given their due process rights. Now, I have handled cases far worse than this Sebastian case, believe me. Child abuse cases, pedophilia cases. And when the press came and called me, I did not run to them, giving them information. My comment was, no comment. It's in the hands of our attorney. Call our attorney. That's what you do. Because even if someone is accused of child abuse, you do not go out and accuse them of it until there's an investigation. So I don't know why you didn't listen to your attorney, but I cannot imagine Mr. Brick sitting up there would tell you to run to the press before an investigation was completed. Any attorney, and including you've got Jack with on here who's an attorney. You don't go to the press. You don't make statements. And this is exactly what has happened. Now I hear there's going to be an investigation. We're using our fund balance because, quote, we have a 5% increase. But, oh, we've got to bring in these firms at $200 to $300 an hour to investigate this. Well, I'm going to tell you, when you're paying a firm $200 to $300 an hour, they'll come up with something. They have to. They'll take a little thing and they'll make a big issue out of it. If these reports come out and they prove that an employee was a card-carrying Ku Klux Klan member and this has been going on, the buck stops at the supervisor's desk. You can't say you didn't know anything about it for two years, three years. You can't keep that a secret. And as a taxpayer, I resent the fact of being told that we have a racist town. You know, we're all living in a 1-2-3-0-9 zip code. If you're that concerned about it and you have children going to school, why didn't you send them to the Schenectady School District? Pay out a pay city tuition. It's very easy to sit in our posh homes crying foul. As I said, I've been in the trenches. I've seen poverty. I've seen injustices. And not from 1-2-3-0-9. So I think this whole thing was handled poorly. I cannot imagine, I can't, as I said, I've handled cases far worse than this. I mean, this looks like Halloween candy compared to some of the cases I've had to handle. And I'll tell you, I never went to the press. And when they called, it was no comment. Speak to our attorney. Now I found out today, I had two emails. The firm that you're hiring to investigate this, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to deny somebody $20,000 vacation pay. I mean, that's really, really being a genius here. That that firm has some connections with someone on this board. I've been informed that the person in this, I think it's Nixon Peabody, the woman, is a friend of a board member. You, Ms. Jackwith, she's a personal friend. She knows your husband. The deputy attorney worked for the firm before she came and worked for the town. This should have been disclosed. And did any other of you people know this? And you voted? Were you aware of this? You don't do this. You don't do this. If you know somebody and you're friends with the person who's heading the investigation and you're part of the Schenectady progressive group, you've got to disclose this. You have to refrain from voting. This is tax dollars. This isn't your personal slush fund. I got two emails on this today. I was shocked. Did you know? And, you know, I wasn't going to, after I got that, I did finally decide to come to the meeting. So I'm also concerned about this. But to be told that we have racism in Niskiuna as a taxpayer? Man, that really, as Joe Biden would say, come on, man. That's crazy. And it is crazy. And the people in Niskiuna should be outraged. Yes, there's always going to be pockets. And, you know, there's racism and there's prejudice against other nationalities. Okay? Italian-Americans called Dagos, Guineas, WAPs. Oh, you don't look Italian, Linda. Are you really Italian? That's a racial statement. That's an ethnic slur. Well, how am I supposed to look? Have two horns? I mean, you're going to have people that are going to do stupid things. And I'm not justifying what Paul Sebastian did. It was idiotic. That's why I don't go on Facebook. I think Facebook, people that get their news from Facebook and Twitter can't be very intellectual. I don't deal with that crap. But a mistake was made. And now we're going to have a report coming out that, you know, it's going to insinuate something. They're going to, they got to blow something up for that amount of money. And two board members who spoke up are being called racist? And no one on the board speaks up in their defense? That's insane. That's utterly insane. Because they're not racist. And I would never allow myself to be hostage to any group who threaten to, what, expose what? Because I'm not going to rush to the press. I'm not going to persecute somebody who made an idiotic, stupid mistake. Maybe he made statements that he shouldn't have made. We all have clay feet. We all do stupid things. And, you know, the other thing that irks me, these same people will go down and praise Planned Parenthood when its founder, Margaret Sanger, was a racist. Where she praised Adolf Hitler in 1938 for what he was doing in Germany. Where she talked about eliminating the black population. These are her writings, where she spoke to the Ku Klux Klan and praised them, the founder of Planned Parenthood. And yet, we don't think anything's wrong with that. And don't get me wrong, I'm not against birth control. I am pro-life, but I am not against birth control. So, I mean, we've got so much hypocrisy going on in this society on both sides of the aisle. It is virtually sickening. It really is. And God help that poor man that has been raped over the coals because it came right after George Floyd and people had to get their name out there politically. And I'll end it with this. I was working with a minority family two weeks ago. And the woman, she's a black parent. She said to me, Linda, and she happened to be talking about this thing in Niskiuna. Okay, she was curious about it. She said, Linda, I don't understand this. One thing worse than racism is white people using that to promote themselves politically. When you know they really don't give a damn. And, you know, she was absolutely right. One thing worse than being a racist is for white people to go out there and use this for political advantage. And then she said, you've got white people turning on your, you've got two board members. Because she happened to see my letter in the paper defending John Delarada, which she agreed with, accusing two board members of this. And you know why? Because you're getting ready for next year's election in November. I'm not stupid. You've got two running and you're targeting these two for whatever political reasons. That's what this is all about. And I find this very disturbing. And I hope what I heard, allegedly, no one on this board knows the people working in Nixon. They're not friends with them. I hope that is false. Because if it isn't, that's a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay. Next registrant, I don't know if this person wants to speak. It's David McGraw.
No, David's not here.
All right. Next registrant, Amy Belcourt. Amy, would you wish to speak?
No.
Okay, all right, great. And I believe we have two more. Michael Scruby Tennis. Michael, are you here? Do you wish to speak? Okay. And then lastly, I have Ann Scruby Tennis. Ann, are you here? Do you wish to speak? Sure, okay. Maybe we can add another field to the signup then. And just grab what you want to speak.
Certainly, my husband wasn't going to speak.
Sure, okay.
Just, I think, in a comment in case there are too many people in the front row. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Sure, you haven't gotten talked to for a while, so.
Actually, Madam Supervisor, I should. All right, Lorraine.
I didn't, I wasn't prepared to speak on the budget, but Linda brought something up that I did want to mention. And that is the fact that even though you may have to use fund balance, we still have a little tax increase. But I think we have unusual expenses. There isn't a time that I don't pick up the resolutions and the agendas. And we're hiring people for sewer and water, which really surprises me. It seems every month we are hiring people to work at sewer and water. Either the direction is not good, the people aren't educated in the process. But there's a lot of expense to hiring and firing. And I do wish you would be a little bit more observant on that. And the other thing is that one of my bugaboos is bonding. And Joe Landry, although I'm very happy he is not here, I was not a fan of him, even though I know we have people that thought he was great. I didn't. But I did say that he overbonded. And I'm afraid that last year we have also done bonding, just like the school board. And I make reference to that with Ms. Perez. Not, I mean, even though, I mean, she's been on the school board. She's been part of the process. And I think that this is something we need to avoid. We not only raise fees, we raise fees on our sewer and water, our bulk collections, our this, and our raises. We are probably the most well-raised town in the county. But the fact remains, we have not let people go. We've been very fortunate. We continue to hire. The new comptroller now wants a confidential assistant. There's not enough people. You know, when I came here, that had two people, the comptroller and Sarge. That's what they called her. what they called her. Life was a little simpler. But my fact is that I do think that the board tends to overlook the small things that add to the big things. Every time I see highway, they're getting a new truck, a new this, a new that. Are we getting more land? Are we getting more roads? Or what are we getting that's having, that we have the best of the best? And I really, I will go over the budget some more, hopefully get back and have some more critics, critical information, but please, you all live here. You're subject to the same things that I'm subject to. But there's a lot of people in town besides the nine, whatever, however you are up there. So I did want to say, when we talked about maybe not using fund balance, the highway department has its own budget. And I think if I've got some budgets left that I haven't start to throw things out, I'm going to find where they have used an awful lot of fund balance. So please, you know, give us a break if you can, if we have to. You don't go anyplace that there hasn't been an increase, the county now, the town, the state, what all else. Let's hope we all survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Lorraine. Yes. Yes, absolutely.
I wanted to take a second, I wasn't sure if I was talking before, but I just, on behalf of NCAP, and especially Jean Sossnow, who did so much work on this, I just want to say thank you very much for the resolution. NCAP really values our partnership with the town, and we look forward to many more projects together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I did have a number of submissions via email for Privilege of the Floor. And these individuals requested that their emails be read until the record this evening, they were unable to attend. So I have five, it looks like. And again, if you, going forward for any town board meeting, if you would like to have your comments read, please submit those before 5:00 PM the day of the town board meeting, in which case all of these were. So I'm going to read them in the order that I received them. I'm going to start with Susan Paul Sinelli of Nine Oakmont Street. Susan writes, "Dear Supervisor Syed and Town Board Members, I am writing regarding my concerns about the Paul Sebesta blackface misconduct investigation. I see that tonight that there is a proposed resolution regarding a social media policy which relates to the misconduct investigation. Conspicuously absent, however, is any indication of how the facts and findings from the Nixon Peabody Law Firm will be shared with the public. For those who don't follow, Paul Sebesta was the Human Resources Director and Comptroller of the town. In June, Progressive Schenectady asked the town board to take action on a photo of Paul Sebesta in blackface. Paul Sebesta was suspended pending an investigation. Two days later, he retired. Nixon Peabody, a nationally ranked and independent law firm, was hired to investigate Paul Sebesta's conduct. The resulting investigation has gone on for months and has cost more than $50,000, likely indicating hundreds of attorney hours spent on interviews at Town Hall. The very length and breadth of this investigation heightens my concerns about racism, retaliation, and misconduct at Town Hall. Multiple town board members have indicated unwavering support for Paul Sebesta, and following a private off-camera emergency session put on record, a vote of three to two to extend Paul Sebesta special privileges not given to other retiring employees, for example, waiving the requirement of a two-week delay before retirement and immediately voting to pay out accrued sick leave and vacation pay. I believe that concerned residents deserve to know the results of this investigation, which cost taxpayers $50,000 as of the August finance meeting, plus an additional amount discussed at the October finance meeting. I am concerned with equity, justice, and fairness, and I want to know that the rights of town employees are protected, and that any recommendations flowing from the investigation are implemented with haste. I also want to know about the related issue that was reported in the Times Union. Did Paul Sebesta, by reason of town policy, forfeit his claim to more than $20,000 of our tax dollars due to malfeasance in office? I'd like to know the conclusion reached by the Nixon Peabody Law Firm before the contested vacation pay is paid out. In conclusion, I hope you will work together to disclose the Paul Sebesta blackface misconduct report to the public, and dedicate your efforts to remediating problems uncovered in the investigation." That concludes that letter. Our next letter was submitted by Sunny Lee of 117 Comanche Trail. Sunny writes, "Supervisor Syed and Town Board Members, I'm very concerned about racial equality issues with our town government. I'm equally concerned with the lack of transparency. The investigation into Mr. Sebesta's blackface photo highlights both of my concerns. I am writing to inquire about the status of the independent investigation of Paul Sebesta's blackface photos. I understand that a law firm was hired and an investigation was underway back in August. To date, there has been no public updates or reports issued regarding the investigation. At the August 11 Finance Committee meeting, Denise Murphy-McGraw exclaimed incredulity at the amount of money being spent for the investigation, calling it eye-popping. She went on to describe Mr. Sebesta's blackface photo as nothing more than a photograph of a Halloween costume. That description is alarming, coming from a person who credits herself as being the founder and the leader of a national anti-racism program. Did the investigation determine that Mr. Sebesta's blackface photo was just a Halloween costume, as Councilwoman McGraw described it, or did the investigation reveal something else? The town residents have a right to know the conclusions reached by the investigation, in particular because the conclusion from the investigation may determine whether or not Mr. Sebesta receives a full payout from the town of his accrued time, not an insignificant sum of money, as I understand it. I ask the town board to be as transparent as possible and make the findings from the investigation known to the public." That concludes that letter. Our next letter was submitted by Lenell Engelmeier of 1354 Hawthorne Road. Lenell writes, "Dear Supervisor Syed, thank you for responding to my email inquiry and letting me know that a public report from the Sebesta inquiry would be released at the end of this month. Transparency is the key to good governance at all levels. We are all aware that there has been a significant sum of funds allocated and paid to Nixon Peabody for their independent investigation, and I am happy to know that you support transparency in making public the findings. While one town board member characterized the blackface in the photo as a Halloween costume, Nixon Peabody's investigative efforts required an additional $24,000 payment beyond the initial $50,000 retainer. That fact alone lends credibility to the assumption that the investigation did not conclude that the photo of blackface was just a Halloween costume. As a taxpaying resident and an advocate for racial and gender equity, I believe it is important to make public the findings from the investigation, and I appreciate your efforts to ensure that this is done." That concludes that letter. Next letter is Kevin Duffy, 1508 Keys Avenue. I write as I am particularly interested in the ridiculous kickback of tens of thousands of dollars, if not over $100,000, seemingly engineered by Rosemarie Jakewood to her personal friend and former close colleague of her husband, Tina Shiketty of Nixon Peabody LLP. I'm also very interested in the connection between Ms. Shiketty, a partner at Nixon Peabody, and her former subordinate at the firm, Deputy Town Attorney Alexis Kim. To briefly rewind, this waste of well over $50,000 of our tax dollars was for an investigation of an ill-advised Bob Marley Halloween costume worn by a former town employee in 2014. The purpose was to determine whether said employee was entitled to approximately $20,000 in hard-earned benefits upon retirement. I repeat, an investigation costing well in excess of $50,000 conducted so to attempt to deny a 30-plus-year employee $20,000 in earned accrued time seriously. A brief review of the facts indicates that in addition to being Alexis Kim's former superior, Ms. Shiketty is a personal Facebook friend of Rosemarie Jakewood. Ms. Shiketty is also a close former subordinate of Jakewood's husband, the two-time Trump appointee, Grant Jakewood, from her time in the U.S. Attorney's Office. She also prosecuted cases alongside Mr. Jakewood, and even held personal meetings with him and journalists to discuss books being written. It is clear as day that Ms. Shiketty was egregiously conflicted in this case, both professionally and personally, and should never have allowed, never have been allowed near it, let alone been given the keys to raid our town's treasury. Ms. Jakewood's lack of transparency in this matter is important, and it seems painfully evident that she set this, set up this appointment to ensure any report is favorable to her. For comic relief, and this is, in this sad pathetic tale, please consider the irony in the fact that for a report into an alleged instance of racism, this town went out and hired someone whose main qualification was being close to Grant Jakewood. Jakewood was a proud foot soldier in Bill Barr's regime at the Department of State, who has not once but twice been given appointments by Donald John Trump, which were in turn rubber-stamped by Mitch McConnell. Grant's first appointment even came at the direct recommendation of Jefferson Beauregard Sessions III, the Attorney General who personally introduced the family separation policy, and a man so racist that a Senate Judiciary Committee chaired by Strom Thurmond refused to send his nomination for a federal judgeship to the full Senate for a vote. Sessions even once said that, "I thought the Ku Klux Klan were okay until I learned they smoked pot." As we speak, Grant is serving as one of the many right-wing judges, no different from Brett Kavanaugh or Amy Coney Barrett, who have been rammed through by Trump and McConnell and are determined to destroy our liberties. But hey, we should totally listen to the Trump judge's spouse and friends, they must be an authority on racism and what is right and moral after all. In light of this, I call on the board to throw the Jakewood-Shiketty report where it belongs in the trash, and refuse to let taxpayer dollars finance this obscene kickback to one of your membership's personal friends." That concludes that letter. Next letter was submitted by Tieran and Foley. Tieran failed to provide their address. I have asked this individual to provide their address to be accurately reflected in the minutes. Hopefully, I will get that. This letter reads, "Dear Supervisor Syed and Town Board, I write because I am angered that the supervisor and board have wasted tens of thousands of dollars on an investigation of a Halloween costume, but I am outraged that this waste was seemingly to benefit a close friend and crony of Councilwoman Jakewood and her husband, Trump Judge Grant Jakewood. Hubris it took for Jakewood to steer tens of thousands of dollars of the taxpayers' money to Nixon Peabody's Tina Shiketty, woman who she is Facebook friends with and who is a simple Google search, who a simple Google search reveals is a close colleague of her husband disgusts me. Yet again, it's clear that Rosemarie Jakewood thinks she is above the rules that apply to everyone else, and as if it weren't clear enough from her time jacking taxes sky-high in the school board, she has no respect for the taxpayers of our town. The investigation at hand is and was a joke from cradle to grave. This whole ridiculous mess is about a Halloween costume, worn so many years ago that every civil and criminal statute of limitations pertaining to it would be long expired, and this should have been left in the past where it belongs. The town board should never have acquiesced to the self-serving demands of the hostage-takers at Progressive Schenectady. Because of it, we have a legal bill which is rumored to be well over $100,000, although I doubt would be as high if an actual independent council were brought in, rather than Councilwoman Jakewood's wringer. This report, obviously biased by the influence of Councilwoman Jakewood and her Trump-appointed husband, should be destroyed along with Nixon Peabody's invoice, which should never be paid. Based off of the public facts connecting the Jakewoods and Tina Shiketty, it looks pretty likely that this report is a political document manufactured by Councilwoman Jakewood to serve her goals and smear those who oppose her. I find this eerily similar to Ron Johnson's lies about Joe Biden, which he also masquerades as the result of an official investigation. It's time to put this ridiculous mess in the past and make sure that we never again have a town board member steering tens of thousands of tax dollars to their personal friend for unpolitical interference on their behalf. The only investigation which the board should consider is a referral of Councilwoman Jakewood to the Barr Association's disciplinary committee for steering tax dollars to her personal friends." And that ends that letter. So, those were all of the emails submissions I received, with no further individuals being left willing to speak, if there are any. You can do so now, to speak during Privilege of the Floor. Okay, with no one left willing to speak, I'm going to close Privilege of the Floor. I thought I heard something, does somebody?
I just wanted to say one thing, I know that you gave a rare chance to come up with a name. May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Give it short, please.
Well, don't worry. I just want to say that having heard those last two letters, and two emails that I got not related to those letters regarding this firm investigating, I think you need to ask some questions and do some investigating. That's all I'm going to say, to see if this is allegedly true. If you didn't know about it, fine, but if you knew about this, then that's not good. So that's all I'm asking, is that you must find out if what is being alleged is accurate. Because if this is to go after two sitting board members for political reasons, using friends that you're hiring to do this, that's pretty bad. I'm not saying it's true, but I'm saying that you must investigate this. You cannot sweep this under the carpet. You're concerned about Halloween costumes, you better be very damn well concerned about this, to find out if it's true or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, is there anyone left willing to speak? No second chances. Okay, seeing no one left willing to speak, I'm going to close Privilege of the Floor. We're going to now move on to our committee reports. We're going to begin with Councilwoman Jakewood.
So, before I get to my committee report, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege. Let's just say that tonight has been very disheartening. It's really ugly to be attacked falsely and personally, but when people attack your family, it's doubly difficult. Unfortunately, this is what people who are entrenched in the status quo want and how they operate. They promulgate faceless smear campaigns. Some people are so frantic at the prospect of change, especially change in furtherance of social justice, that they'll do or say anything. All of this just underscores the work of the task force, and underscores that we still have a lot of work to do. Thank you. I'm going to move on to my report now. Highway Parks and Recreation Committee report for today, under Community Program Updates. Movie nights, thanks to generous grant by the Iskayuna Community Foundation. For a blow-up screen, projector, Blu-ray player, and speakers, we were able to hold three very successful outdoor movie nights at Town Hall. Next year, we're hoping to have them bi-weekly for the summer season. Pumpkin painting, we hosted an outdoor pumpkin painting event at Town Hall this past Saturday. Registration was limited to 12, and the program was filled. Thank you to ShopRite for donating the pumpkins. We also have a Halloween parade coming up this Sunday, October 25th, from 3 to 4. I do believe Chief Wall may be giving out an update on Halloween activities, so look for that. We're also in the process of working out the details for Toys for Tots, Things of My Very Own, and Parents Night. An update will be provided next month. Under Senior Center Programs and Updates, the Gershans Meal Program has commenced, we've talked about that at committee. We've moved away from making meals at the senior center and providing boxed meals. The staff has worked very hard to accommodate the needs and wants of seniors. We're actually saving money in terms of staff and saving money in terms of the meals. I commend all the staff, the senior center staff that's worked very hard to make this program work. So they're starting with an Oktoberfest meal on 10/29, October 29th, and again, lunches will continue Tuesdays and Thursdays. $5, meals will be pre-ordered, you can eat in or take out. Exercise classes continue, the senior center continues to put out great inf- The senior center continues to put out great information via Zoom and electronically, social media, et cetera, about their programs, so I encourage everybody to check those out. There's a women's health lecture taking place on November 3rd. The Eddie Home Safety, Sang Stave and Your Home program on November 19th at 1:00. Also underway with the senior center staff, we met and we've been exploring a sponsorship-like revenue generating idea. So again, I want to commend the staff on the work they've put into this so far. It's a great initiative. We plan to make, you know, again, bring in revenue to the town through various sponsorship ideas which we're putting together and will be coming out soon. Moving on to Highway and Parks, Highway crews have finished paving for the 2020 season. Twenty-six roads were paved this year, totaling five-plus miles. And we also completed Lock 7 reconstruction project that was about 2,700 feet along three miles, and also along with three miles of the bike path. So there's a lot of paving that went on this past season despite our delay, despite the COVID situation. So our crews are to be commended for that. Crews are out chipping brush from recent storms. We've had a number of those. They've been out around the clock. There's been three big trucks and chippers out almost every day. I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from the community about the efforts of the Highway Crew in terms of picking up loose brush. They've been out. There's not been the requirement to have a tide. The crews have been great and working around the clock, and they are to be commended for that. Yard waste pickup will continue until December 1st or the heavy snowfall. There's no scheduled pickup day, so leave up your cans to the curbside. We will be putting out information, probably at the next Highway Committee meeting, we'll go over sort of do's and don'ts for the season. I know there's sometimes issues with mailbox getting taken out and basketball hoops, so we'll address that at the next committee meeting. Loose leaf pickup starts October 26th, next Monday. The schedule for that is also posted on the town website. And the additional radar signs are in and will be operational by month's end. I wanted to talk about, there were two new crosswalks that were installed on Dean Street to help with pedestrian crossing and as part of a traffic calming measure. I'd like to thank our county legislators, Osterlich, Constantine, and Pratt, and Schenectady County, that's a county road, and they took care of that, and we appreciate that. Under Parks, crews are cleaning, you know, parks and boulevards of leaves and debris. Town facilities are being prepared and will be, you know, for closure for winter, they're being winterized and will be closed as of November 1st for the season. I'd like to say something about the women's rally. There's a women's rally held on October 17th. Among the many speakers was our own Chief Fran Wall. Her long and stellar career as a Marine and a police officer in service to our town and to our country, and her appointment as the first female Niskuna Police Chief serves as a shining example to the young women that attended the rally and to us all. So, thank you, Chief Wall. Hats off to her. And the next meeting of the Highway Parks and Recreation Committee will be Wednesday, November 4th at 8:00 a.m. All are welcome. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jakewood. Next, we have Councilwoman Delarosa.
Thank you, Supervisor and Councilwoman Jakewood. Our next meeting will actually be on the 30th of this month, or usually the first Friday of every month, but we will be on October 30th at 8:30 a.m. And I believe we are still virtual. Hopefully, that will be our last one, but right now, we are still scheduled to be virtual. Our Community Choice Aggregation Program still has a lot of support. That was an energy-saving program we were going to put into place this year, but due to COVID and the uncertainty of our energy market, that program is currently on hold. The Kelts Farm Average Density Development Project is continuing to go forward. I believe there's been a decision after communicating with the neighbors to make that Windsor stub into a small pocket park. They're also working on a proposal to convert the Aqueduct Animal Hospital into a six-unit apartment building, and that is the animal hospital that is now vacant right on Balltown Road there, going towards the Rexford Bridge. There is a subdivision going on at Shannon Boulevard and Choice Schenectady Road. I've been hearing a lot of it, as I'm sure my other council members have. It is a small subdivision, and there's a historic home that's situated on the corner that will stay there. There'll also be some land dedicated to preservation of the Lyshekill with an additional three homes that are, want to be added by that developer. The next step would be a sketch plan approval and then public hearing with the planning board, which probably would take place sometime in late November. As you see, there is a resolution on for a, some regulatory fees for chickens. They are relatively minor, it's $25 a year every year, and then up to $50, I'm sorry, $50 for a chicken coop, up to $1,000. And the idea was to see how this goes after the first year or so. It can always be changed if needed. But more importantly, you'll see a resolution on tonight to accept a $250,000 grant from the New York State Assembly. Thank you to our committee, Assembly Committee Chairman Stack, our Phil Stack Chairs. We've had to make some adjustments to the plan. This is for the River Road Park because we are certainly in some very difficult medical and financial times that are causing some stresses, as you know, on everybody's finance, including the town's finances. But the intention is to use this money as efficiently and effectively as we can because it will go a long way in making one of our most-used parks much more improved. So that being said, I do want to thank Assemblyman Stack as well as my other town board members for that legislation, as well as for their support in getting chickens right here in the town in Niskuna, so we'll see how that goes. Hope to see all on October 30th at 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Delarosa. We're now going to move on to Councilwoman McGraw.
Thank you, Supervisor. I want to just update people. The Mohawk Road Water Main Replacement Project has been moving along. We're very hopeful to get it done before the end of the month. It's been a major undertaking, but everybody who lives in town and has been subject to various water main breaks and a lack of water in town really understands the importance of this one very large main in town, and I'm very grateful to the Water and Sewer Department for moving along with this project, finding the funds in their current budget to move it along, get it done, and especially, there's been so many efforts over in that part of town, the new rotary at River and Rosendale and that new water main. It really does improve that section of town quite, quite a bit. The fall utility bills are due on the 28th of this month. There are no in-person bills. I know that's a hardship to some folks. They like to come in and visit and drop off their bills, but no in-person payments for that, and they are, again, due on the 28th. There are series, and everyone knows, we just really were struck by one of those pop-up storms that did a credible amount of damage, and much of the town was out without power earlier this month, as well as our town facilities. And I do want to really tip my hat to Matt Yedo and his entire team at Water and Sewer. Matt spent well into the Friday evening, the second night of not having power, working directly with National Grid, working with the state, working with the governor's office. We were all working to try to get our wastewater treatment plant back online, our water plants back online, in addition to perhaps putting in a good word to get some of our neighborhoods back online with power. So I want to thank Matt for all his efforts there. Councilwoman Jakewood mentioned the Town Halloween Parade on Sunday. I look forward to seeing folks there. This will be a new one for us. We're going to have prizes. We're going to have costume contests this year. I'm very excited for that, after 19 years and finally doing something a little different with this parade, and I'm very excited to see what we get, even pets. We will have pet costume contests as well. Many of you may have noticed, one of the resolutions in the packet is for a racial bias audit. We are working very hard. I want to thank our comptroller for moving forward on this project. Councilwoman McPartlin and I have been working to move forward on this. We do not have contracts. We do not have contractors. We are not going to move forward with this resolution tonight, but I look forward to moving forward with it next month. And that is all I have, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman McGraw. Next, we have Councilwoman McPartlin.
Thank you, Supervisor. Police and Public Safety Committee met on October 6th. Operationally, we discussed some of the larcenies that were going on in town with people breaking into cars. We get recommended for all our residents to please lock up their vehicles. We put on some late patrols, and we're happy to report that those larcenies have subsided. Regarding PPE, the chief reports that the department has got a fair stock of PPE, just maybe a little short on small gloves, but in speaking to other people in other areas, that seems to be the norm for lots of other departments. Smaller gloves are hard to come by. Our fleet and equipment, with two new patrol cars have arrived and are in for outfitting. The building lock system to be installed by TPS, so TBS, hopefully that will be occurring very soon. Training, training's always very important for our police department. Our fall range training went on as scheduled and has been completed. The department also underwent training for Domestic Violence Advocate for Inclusion in the Domestic Abuse High-Risk Team Assessment Program. Officer Maura Walter will now be a member of this team. The chief reports that the police department's developing a deployment of tasers. We have now gotten through a grant tasers for our officers, and actually, just today, we had a training session with all our officers for tasers, and that will just be a new tool for them to use to try to keep down, keep de-escalating situations appropriately. Defensive tactic training continues to go on with our officers. The chief reports that she will be attending a leadership summit October 28th and 29th by the New York State Association of Chief of Police and New York Sheriff's Association. Also, as Councilwoman Jakewood reported, Chief Wall spoke on the 17th, right here at Town Hall on that rally for women, and we're very happy that she did that because she is a good role model for all young, young women. More training, combined agency active shooter training is scheduled for the 7th and 8th of November. Citizen issues. I'm sure people either read about or heard about some of the racing that was going on down Route 7 with motorcycles and cars, and may have read some other reports that that wasn't only in Niskuna but in other towns where this has, had been occurring. We put some patrols out in that area during those hours, and that subsided from Niskuna but went into two other towns, and apparently, there was a fatal crash involving one of those. We appreciate it when our residents do make us aware of these situations, though, because it allows us to then put our resources where they need to be. We did a study on McGovern Drive for three days because we had gotten some information from residents about they felt that they were speeding on that, and we did a study there with the average speed of about 25 miles an hour. I think it's a volume problem, a lot, lot, lot more cars in that area, 1,700 cars. So that's, that's quite a bit of traffic in three days. The farmer's market, if anyone attended there, we, a couple of farmer's markets, we had coffee with a cop, which seemed to go over very well with our residents, could come and speak to our officers in a more relaxed setting. Drug Take Back Day is this Saturday, so we've been getting quite a bit of calls about our box here in Town Hall, and with Town Hall being closed and appointment only, we're having a Drug Take Back Day on Saturday. It's National Drug Take Back Day. So that event's going to occur here at Town Hall, and we're asking all residents that want to come, please come. It's going to be a drive-through event. We have volunteers that will all be screened for COVID temperature screenings and the necessary screenings. They'll be wearing gloves and masks. Residents will not have to get out of their vehicles. They can just drive up. Volunteers will take their stuff, put it in the burn boxes, and away it will go. We're also taking any kind of tobacco, vaping devices, all that sort of stuff can be dropped off on Saturday here at Town Hall. The Fire Department reports some complaints about recreational fires. Now, recreational fires are allowed in the town. There's codes about size and how those fires should be had. Those are on the town website. We've gotten some complaints for some, from some neighbors, and when we get those calls, obviously, the Fire Department goes out, investigates them, and our police officers, but we're happy to report there have been no fires that have not been compliant. All the fires have been compliant. Court issues, Judge Swinton was at our meeting and reports that there will be no evictions until January. That's per regulation of the state, and traffic trials should begin next month. Chief also reports that our town and our department will no longer be using the term patrolman. Well, I guess we never realized that that was still being used, but it's now police officer, so all of our material and all of our training will all indicate police officer, not, not patrolman. And I want to thank my Councilwoman McGraw for mentioning about the racial bias audit, working on that with comptroller Alana, who was here this evening, and hopefully, as we said, by next month, we'll have that for a resolution. The next meeting for Police and Public Safety is November 3rd at 8:00 a.m. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilwoman McPartlin. That's the conclusion of committee reports. I'm going to move on to my supervisor's report. So as an update on the budget, we concluded our budget workshops last week. Thank you to all who attended. If you miss the ability to livestream the budget workshops, all of the meeting videos are available to stream on our YouTube channel, so you can find that channel, there's a link to it on our website. Currently, we are working on edits to the budget. These will be submitted prior to the preliminary budget being filed. All of those will be formulated into the one document that's going to be filed on Thursday, October 30th, to the town clerk. The preliminary budget will be posted to the website for public review. So tonight, we are voting on a resolution to call for the public hearing on the budget, which will take place at a town board special meeting on Thursday, November 5th. So again, that, that's going to be the budget public hearing, and that'll be a special meeting on Thursday, November 5th. A public hearing will be held in person, just like we are here today, here in the boardroom. If you would like to sign up to speak during the public hearing, you can register online, much like some of you took advantage of this evening. After the public hearing, any necessary changes to the budget will be incorporated into the final budget, and that will be voted on at the November 19th Town Board Regular Meeting. And again, that meeting is also on a Thursday. So typically, we have Tuesday meetings. All of our board meetings in November are going to be on Thursdays. As an update on the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative, an announcement will be made this week as to the membership of the collaborative. We'll also be announcing the kickoff meeting. And I want to thank all of the eager town residents who very enthusiastically applied to serve on this collaborative, so I'm really excited to see that group get to work and make some change in the community. With respect to public meetings, we will continue to hold our finance and agenda meetings and our town board meetings in public, right here in the town boardroom. All of our other committees, councils, and boards will continue to meet virtually until otherwise announced. As you may or may not know, the governor extended his executive order allowing for meetings to be held remotely. So we are a little bit more than 10 days away from Halloween. Chief Wall and I will be issuing safety guidance. Many of you have reached out to me to ask if we have any safety guidelines that we're going to be issuing, if we're going to be restricting time for trick-or-treaters. restricting time for trick-or-treaters, if there's going to be trick-or-treating, which there will be, we're not going to cancel Halloween this year. So look forward to that announcement to be made sometime this week as well. And while we are on the topic of Halloween, I just want to encourage you that when you're choosing your Halloween costumes, that you keep in mind, very important hashtag that has been going around social media, but I think it's an important one. It's a culture, not a costume. And just because you're wearing something under the guise of reverence does not mean that it is reverent. So I hope that you all keep that in mind. And thank you. That concludes my supervisor's report. We are going to move on to our resolutions. We already did our first three. So we are going to begin with Resolution 2020-257, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarado. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing fees associated with Chapter 82 of the Code of the Town of Niskuna entitled Regulation of Chickens.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-258, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarado and Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding the construction contract for River Road Park Improvement Project to CFI Construction, Inc.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-259, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract to Pollard Excavating to install a flow meter bolt and piping at the Valerie Drive Pump Station.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-260, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a part-time project aide at the senior center.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-261, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract to Technical Building Services, TBS, to furnish and install well-mounted ultraviolet germicidal fixtures at the Recreation Senior Center.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-262, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing a policy for the appointment of student representatives to town advisory committees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-263, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-264, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting the Town of Niskuna's use of social media policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Very happy to see this policy move forward. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-265, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a letter of engagement with Gerwin and Berlazzo PC for legal services concerning labor and employment matters.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-266, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting the revised retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records, LGS-1.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-267, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing the standard workday for elected and appointed officials.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-268, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the 2021 preliminary budget of the Town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Resolution 2020-269, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a student worker to the Information Technology Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-270, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute and authorize user agreements with telecommunication connectivity services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes. Five ayes. And this resolution passes. Thank you. Next resolution, 2020-271, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a confidential assistant to the comptroller.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Janet, and I know all too well what it's like to be the subject of some of the comments during Privilege of the Floor. But we all know that you're, this is a well-deserved movement within the, the, in your, within the comptroller's office. We are very grateful for all the work that you did in the interim period while we were conducting the search. And I am very pleased with everything that you did to help us get to somewhat of a point on a budget. And that was really a lot of hard work. We know that you spent nights and weekends and, and not feeling that great yourself. So thank you very much. And I'm very, I'm happily voting in favor of this resolution this evening. Janet, this is a well-deserved appointment. We really do appreciate all your work. You're a great, dedicated town employee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Janet, you know, I've said it before in many meetings, but again, thank you. Getting us through all that very difficult time, down an accountant, and just yourself, and Margot and Nancy there, and then getting us through having Isma come in and helping her get right up to speed as quickly as possible. We really do appreciate everything you've done.
Even the peanut gallery is agreeing. We must be on to something here.
Thank you. And to echo everyone's sentiments, Janet, thank you so much for everything you've done thus far, what you're going to continue to do. Thank you for all those late nights and weekends that you put in. And just can't say thank you enough. So without further ado, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-272, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract to Pollard Excavating to construct a fuel tank canopy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-273, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a driveway and/or water line agreement with owners at 2 St. Gerard Lane, or Drive, excuse me.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-274, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a driveway and/or water line agreement with owner of 6 St. Gerard Drive.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-275, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution correcting the reconciliation of residential and commercial utility charges and collected, and collected for second half of 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution is adopted. Next resolution, 2020-276, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution correcting the warrant for residential and commercial utility billing for the first half of 2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-277, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. The clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract to Underground Testing and Services LLC to install insertion water valves.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakewood?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2020-278, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?